The time is seven o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Raytown Board of Alderman meeting. This is the January 18th, 2011 meeting, regular session number forty-three. It is seven o'clock, so we're going to go into the opening session. At this time, we've got Stephen King, the pastor of Ivanhoe United Church of Christ, will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Eternal Spirit of Truth, please hear our prayer. The Board of Aldermen are about to hold a meeting in your sight and in public view. The Board enters into this task with the fresh memory of Martin Luther King Jr. memorial celebrations and community goodwill engendered by those celebrations. Be graceful tonight to these city leaders so that they may have enough of your wisdom and vision to guide them in what they undertake and decide. Give them and all who deal with them your holy sense of humor. Give them and all who deal with them an awareness of the power of humility properly applied among a community of equals. Our most revered leaders and teachers, Jesus, the one who is called the Christ, and President Abraham Lincoln, and Mahatma Gandhi, who is called the Mahatma, and Reverend Dr. King, and others have demonstrated that humility is a powerful tool when properly applied. Eternal Spirit of Truth, we ask that you liberate all our minds from any prejudice that might interfere with the promotion of justice and peace, and eliminate any attitude we may have that is just, that this is just another meeting. May our participation in short prayer and the pledge of allegiance remind us that any opportunity for people together is important and an expression of our oldest and most important traditions of government. With your blessings, Eternal Spirit, on what we do here and on our families, neighbors, and friends in Raytown, may justice be our goal and mutual respect be our means to every end. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor King, thank you very much. Starting. Thank you. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Pardue?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Hamilton?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, we have public comments. I've got quite a list here in front of me that apparently are with the address of sixty-one twelve Manning. I want to make sure that those that wish to speak realize that there's a, there's two different opportunities to this. One is the public comments section, which we're in now, and at that time, we typically like to hear about, or hear from you on items other than specific to public hearings. In this, I just want you to make sure that during the public hearing portion, you'll have a time to speak, and at that time, it's specific to that matter. So you can go, you can speak now, or you can speak during that time, but we'd ask for it not to be again. So choose and think about which time you'd like to. Are you okay with that, counsel? Okay. I mean, we have public comment now, which is generally for anything related to the city other than items on the agenda that pertain to public hearings. So you'll have a time to speak for public comment during the public hearing on items four A and five A coming up. So keep that in mind. Okay, so we're going to go to public comments. Each, each of the speakers has three minutes. We'd ask for you to stay on topic with that. And first, we've got Mary Racy, is it? Hope I pronounce that right. And Ms. Racy, again, is this, you want to?
Can we wait till the comments on them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Help me with, that apply to Ryan O'Malley.
Public comment.
Okay. Mike, Mike Perkins?
Public comment.
Arlis? Thank you. Wilson?
Go on down, there's like nine of them.
Okay. I got Deval, Chris Deval, Beverly Parker, Jamar Turner, Stephanie Curtis, Raylene. Help me out with that one.
Rollene.
Rollene, okay. Do you wish to speak now, or you want to hold it for the public hearing?
Well, I'll have it.
Okay. And help me out with this. Is this Lucy O'Malley?
Yes.
You'll wait till then also. Tim O'Malley, I'm saying, I'm guessing the same thing. Okay, sir. Wayne?
I'll wait.
You'll wait, okay. Wendy Sealbinder? Get close on that. And Andy Whitman. Andy, you want, okay. We'll, we'll call upon you during the public hearing portion, those that I just mentioned. Thank you very much. Andy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'll comment now, then I'll return to make a, probably return to make a comment on, under public comments. But I thought the limit was five minutes. Has it changed? It used to be five minutes, and you just said three minutes.
Oops. My apologies.
Okay. I was just bringing it up as a point.
My apologies.
Okay, no problem.
Three, five.
I don't have that much to say, anyway, but I want to make the point that I appreciate the work of our Public Works Department and the fine job they did during the last snowstorm and all the snowstorms we've had this year, as a matter of fact. And, you know, it's downright miserable out there. I appreciate them getting out there and clearing the streets. Strange thing is, I haven't seen them. I usually see them, but this year, I have not seen them at all, but I've heard them, and obviously, the streets are clean. My appreciation's to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Okay. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the Board of Aldermen this time on, again, items other than particular to items four A and five A? Okay, we're going to move on with the business beforehand. I want to, I want to be sure to thank some, some folks in our audience from St. Regis Troop ten ninety-eight, Boy Scout, Boy Scout Troop ten ninety-eight from St. Regis. Thanks for coming out and with your leader tonight. If you last the whole time, you'll be probably the first troop that has lasted the entire length of a meeting, but we also hope it's not over at eleven forty-five this time, too. So thanks for coming. We welcome scouts and any of the youth who'd like to learn more about city government. The Pastor King did mention briefly the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration that we had. It was a community-wide celebration this past Sunday at Blue Ridge Presbyterian Church. It was quite a fabulous event. I think, once again, we, we thought we had a huge crowd last year and broke all sorts of records, and that, again, was, was met and surpassed this past week and as well. The theme was united, or unity with love, pass it on. We, as you might know, the last meeting, we had Mother, Queen Mother with us as well, and she helped us learn some new lyrics to that song. So we learned more about that. The big part of the event is certainly the mixing of, of other participants. And from Raytown, we had the choral group from Spring Valley Elementary School Choir, Director Jennifer Patterson with that. Also, there was a part of that, the, the schoolchildren of Raytown and of the Passo Academy went together and developed some art specific for that event, and that art is now on tour around Raytown and Kansas City to express their understanding of Dr. King's dream, peace, and reconciliation. So the tour on that, we actually have it, I believe it's now, in City Hall. It'll also travel to Eastwood Hills Elementary School and then to Southwood Elementary School. I'm sorry. Those students who participate, I'm sorry, the students who participated in that gallery are from Eastwood Hills Elementary School, Southwood Elementary School, and the Passo Academy of Fine and Performing Arts, and it will be touring, and we have it on display here in Raytown City Hall. It's a great event, I think one that we can be very proud of. The HRC, Human Relations Commission, played a big part of that, as did the school system, and Raytown should be very proud. With that, Mahesh, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Bauer and Board of Aldermen. Few items to update you tonight. I will start with the event that we are going to get tomorrow and into the Thursday, is the snow. We are expecting significant amount of snow, and from tomorrow morning, twenty-four hour operation will begin for the Public Works folks who will clear the streets. And as, you know, Andy Whitman just said, and I'll echo to his comment, it is good to see when we get more compliments regarding our snow operation than the complaints we received. In this last event, we got a lot more compliments, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of those, but I would like to read an email that was sent to our Director of Public Works from one of the constituents, and it reads, "To whom it may concern, I would like to say thank you to all the street maintenance worker who cleared snow from the recent storm on January ninth. I finally got out today to run some errands, and as I was driving to South Kansas City, downtown banister between Raytown Road and Blue Ridge Boulevard, I noticed all the residential street in the area had not been cleared. At all, it seems to me that may have I had one pass, but I have, I would have thought by now, they would have been cleared. I want to say thank you for all your hard work and great job on all the residential street in Raytown. Keep up the good work and know that you are greatly appreciated." Today, at five o'clock, filing for the offices closed. Here is the updated list for April fifth, two thousand and eleven municipal election. Mayor, four-year term expiring April twenty fifteen. By the way, all terms I'm going to read is going to expire on twenty fifteen. The candidates who filed, David Bauer, incumbent, Bill Van Busker, and Anwar Khan. City Collector, four-year term, Kathy Schulte. Alderman Ward one, Joe Kramer, incumbent, Greg Walters. Alderman Ward two, Robbie Tubbs, John Jacobs, Jim Azier, incumbent. Alderman Ward three, Dwayne Basem, Charlotte Nelson, incumbent. Alderman Ward four, Pat Ertz, incumbent, and Michelle Williams. Alderman Ward five, Michael Lightfoot. Last item I have on agenda is, I just wanted to notify the Board on three different projects. The city of Raytown were able to receive aggregate of approximately one point three million dollars, and those three agreements will come to your approval sometime in the future. One has to do with the transportation enhancement project, which would be for a sidewalk project on the three fifty highway from the western city limit to Maple. The sidewalk will be on the south side of the street. That was in the amount of roughly four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Then there would be a construction dollars for the intersection of Raytown Road and three fifty highway in the amount of roughly six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then city was able to obtain CMAC money in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the overlay project on Blue Ridge Boulevard. With that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mahesh. Moving to committee reports, I'll ask Alderman White if she has a report on municipal.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Nelson, Finance?
Yes. Finance Committee will be meeting next Tuesday, six o'clock here in council chambers.
Mr. Azier, Legislative?
None.
Mr. Pardue?
Yes, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting this Thursday with a joint meeting with the Kiwanis Group at Hy-Vee, and that's at six o'clock on Thursday, so.
Mr. Mock?
Yeah, Council on Aging will be meeting at, on January, excuse me, on January twentieth at four fifteen. Here.
Mr. Lightfoot, anything to add as co-chair of Legislative?
No, sir.
Thanks, sir. Any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on. Move on to the Legislative Session. We've got consent agenda before us. We have several items on the consent agenda. Would anyone on the Board wish to remove any of those items?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Van Busker?
I request that Resolution R. two-three-five-five-eleven be moved to the regular agenda.
Do I hear any objection from the remainder of the Board? Okay. Item R. twenty-three-five-five-dash-eleven will be moved to, I believe that is called, what does that be, one B then? Counsel, you all right with that, or we'll just take it up before item two then? Okay, one A on the agenda. Very good. I hear a motion regarding approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Kramer has moved approval of the consent agenda minus R. twenty-three-five-five-eleven, now renowned as one A, seconded by Mr. Pardue. Discussion before we vote.
I do have, yeah, I do have a question on the R. twenty-three-five-six-eleven on the sidewalks.
I don't think you can do that unless you want to pull it.
Oh, you can't ask a question?
That's the purpose of consent agenda. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Asking for discussion about, discussion to approve the consent agenda, is that right, or do we even need to do that? Move straight to vote on consent agenda? You want to call that vote? Please do.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item one A, known as R. twenty-three-five-five-dash-eleven.
A resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of ammunition from Gulf State Distributors off the State of Missouri Law Enforcement Agency Cooperative Purchase Contract in excess of fifteen thousand dollars but within budget amounts for fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven.
Our Police Chief, Jim Lynch, anything to add, sir?
Only that this is a, hits the fifteen thousand dollar threshold, and that's per purchasing, per city policy, we're coming to you for your approval.
Questions of the chief. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, pardon me. On, I believe it's the third page, it says State of Missouri Ammunition Contract, and then it gives the number, effective November fifteenth, two thousand and ten, through May fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. Will this run the entire time, or is, does it expire after its time? Do we plan on purchasing everything that we need before that time?
In, in general terms, our budget's about forty thousand dollars for ammunition during the year. I don't have it in the exact amount in front of me. We will probably purchase all this before then, before that date. This company, in particular, gets, it seems like they get the bid every year, but it's a state contract, so I'm sure they'll be right back in the mix of things after their year runs different than our budget year.
Right, right. Yeah, I noticed that, in the sheet that I had in front of me earlier, I can't find it right now, but it showed our date expiring after the May fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. I just wanted to make sure we were going to be on the same pricing.
The only, the only exception, I would say, after May, it could, it could change.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Busker?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, did I hear you say it was approximately forty thousand, the total purchase?
It's approximately forty thousand. It's about five hundred dollars a officer, roughly, for the year.
We had a brief discussion a few days ago in just regards to utilization of ammunition that's left from last year's purchases, and I understood you to say that that is utilized, and we, we do, is not just disposed of, and we use it for practice.
Yeah, it is, and there's, with our duty ammo, it's different than practice ammo. Our duty ammo is cycled every year. It, that's typically only fifty rounds an officer, but that's duty ammo carried. There is some in reserve, it's, it's not much, but we, we use it all.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Mr. Mock?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Ms. White has the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Kramer. Discussion before we vote on item one A, which is R. twenty-three-five-five-eleven. No discussion, no further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Item number two on our agenda, please.
A resolution authorizing, approving and authorizing execution of supplemental agreement number one for the professional engineering services contract with Bartlett and West, Inc. for the design of a sanitary sewer rehabilitation project for the White Oak West Main Line A in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, and amending the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget by twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Mr. Noel, our Public Works Director, again, thank you, sir, on behalf of the, the Board and the city and many constituents for your hard work and those that work with you in clearing our streets. It was a pleasure to, to hear from a number of people that said it was nice to be in Raytown where the streets were clear and they could see a distinct difference between the areas around us in Raytown. So the floor is yours to talk about item two, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure that the guys who are actually behind the plow get that compliment. This particular resolution before you is to modify an agreement that we have with Bartlett and West to design a project in White Oak West Line A that will alleviate backup problems that we have experienced this last June. This will hopefully address a great deal of those issues so that we don't have any more backups in that area. We'll provide more capacity in those areas. They've been working on this project for a while, but up until last June, there was a project that was ahead of this, and we reprioritized as a result of those backups because we had more backups that would be resolved by this project significantly more when we didn't have any backups in the other watershed, that we had a large project waiting. It was called the Park Lane Sanitary Sewer Project. So we wanted to accelerate this project. I took a look at the, the plans, just to make sure that I was comfortable with them before they were sent out to bid, and I had several concerns. The main concern I had that was before they were constructing this project right down the middle of eighty-third Street in front of the elementary school, and I was concerned at how were we going to get buses in and out of that particular location. Discussed it somewhere with the engineers, and they said, basically, that alignment was set to minimize any potential utility conflicts. They put it as far away from all the utilities as they could, but that meant running it right down the middle of the street. My concern is, as we run it down the middle of the street, it makes it hard for the contractor because they're going to be limited on space, and then it's going to make it hard on the elementary school to get buses in and out of there, unless we were able to complete that project in a two-month timeframe, which with that large of a project, would be very hard to, to set that in stone, that they could only work on in this particular area between this timeframe when school was not in session. And with school sometimes being a twelve-month item, where they have summer school or special activities, I was very concerned about that. So we proposed to realign that portion to push it to the south side of eighty-third Street so that we won't have as nearly the impact for the elementary school. Now, if we realign it, eastbound and westbound traffic will have access to both drives at the elementary school, where before, it would only be, westbound traffic would have access to the drives. So that was one portion of the increase. The other increase was detailed plans for curb and sidewalk reconstruction. The other one was for traffic control plans, because we're limiting the amount of roadway that they can have disturbed at once so that we try to minimize the traffic impact, so we need to have that documented in plans. And we reduced some of the additional, and the other fee was twenty-seven thousand dollars for an emergency design that was completed about a year and a half ago for Seventy-second Street where we had a collapse. They were under contract at the time to do the design work, and they had simply billed against this particular project, and we need to document that and move forward with those emergency services. They did survey and got the work out for bid and constructed rather quickly. And to offset some of those increases, we decreased services in the bidding phase, and then also in the construction phase services. So we had an increase of fifty thousand, five hundred, a decrease of twenty-two thousand for the total increase of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Brought this before municipal and was recommended for approval. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Noel. Ms. Nelson?
So basically, this cost is for plans and designs?
That is correct. No construction.
Okay, and so do you feel that all the issues have been addressed that you had?
Yes.
With their original proposal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lightfoot?
My question's on the Seventy-second Street emergency project. The city was charged twenty-seven thousand. Does that fee seem excessive or at a higher rate than, than the other fees in this project or in the other projects?
Considering the, that they had to complete the survey in a very quick period of time because they, what happened on that project, had a collapse that was causing a backup, and we were having to do emergency pump around at that particular point, so they did a lot of work in an overtime fashion. So for considering the circumstances of the project, I don't think it's excessive. It is more than some of the other fees, but due to the emergency nature of that project, I think those are reasonable fees.
Thank you. Mr. Mock?
Yeah, remember that project going on. Just, I'd like to move to approve.
Second. Mr. Mock has the motion to approve, seconded by Ms. White. Discussion before we vote on item number two. Call the vote, please.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Item number three, please.
A resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget related to personnel.
Andy Noel, anything to add, sir?
We brought this issue before the Municipal Committee and was recommended for approval. Basically, I made a mistake when I was sending an Excel spreadsheet to Jeremy Wilmeth, where we only funded twenty-seven point six of the twenty-eight point six positions that we thought we had. So we have approved, in the budget, twenty-nine point six positions. One of those was frozen, but inadvertently, when we were modifying the budget to make sure I got the amount of cuts that we needed, we, I made a mistake and actually froze two positions instead of just one, and we caught that recently when we were trying to get the full staff for those items, and this is to correct that error on my part. This will hire that last sanitary sewer position that we were looking to fill. The total cost per year is forty thousand, four hundred and seventeen. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Takes a big man to admit before hundreds of thousands of people that he made a mistake.
It's not the first, probably won't be the last, unfortunately.
Questions, Mr. Noel. Mr. Van Busker?
I think it would be worth noting, too, in the amount you're talking about in salaries, not just salary, that includes benefits and in addition to that, so, or that is included in the, in the forty thousand figure that you gave, correct?
That is correct. The salary alone is twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lightfoot?
I was just curious, are all the maintenance positions funded through the sanitary sewer fund?
No, not all of them. I'd have to look at it. There's, I believe there's three or four that are funded through the general fund. I don't have that breakdown of.
I just noticed this position would be funded that way, so.
That is correct. Some of them are funded a hundred percent through the sanitary sewer fund, some of them have a split, and then others are funded through the general fund.
Thank you. That, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion made by Mr. Lightfoot, seconded by Ms. Nelson. Call for discussion further? Mr.
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?